Brother. Good. So, that is from Jake. That is all of, yes, that is all about the, uh, yes. 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 Mr. Brown, too. One minute on my phone and I'm gonna go hit the gavel. Y'all ready? I know Mr. Brown is here, so. Ms. Cook, are you ready? You ready? Yeah. He's coming, he's... Well, good afternoon. It is great to have a house full, especially on our, uh, four o'clock workshop. We know we've got some, some good things coming forward. Um, I'd like to call the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education Workshop or Work Session to order, and if you would, make sure all that your electronic devices are on silent. I always have to double check for sure. So, uh, today, um, Mr. Holmes is gonna lead us in our prayer and Ms. McDonald is gonna do our pledge.
Father God, we come thanksgiving and love in our heart. We thank you, Lord God, for this opportunity. We pray, God, that you cover us, lead God, and direct us. Lord God, let us make decisions that's gonna be best for our constituents, our scholars, and our staff. We ask these things knowing that you can and you will, and it's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. So, board members, um, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of our agenda today.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. McDonald and a second by Mr. Brown. All in favor, signify by raising your hand.
Uh, no, man, don't, don't show that insulting me, man.
Excuse me, Mr. Holmes. Uh, so we have the, the motion and the second, all in favor, signify by raising your hand, and that'll be five oh. And then we will go right into the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of this board?
Some of.
I have a motion by Ms. Cook and a second by Ms. McDonald. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Your hand. Five oh, which leads us to number five, to our presentations and discussions. Uh, we have our Dundee Promise Initiative, and I've asked Ms., uh, Barbara Jo Cook if she would be willing to introduce Dr. Clark.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to introduce our president of Southern Crescent Technical College, Dr. Irvin Clark. It is also a pleasure to have so many special guests here tonight, which he will introduce to you in a few minutes. Dr. Clark has been at Southern Crescent for the past two years, has a very prestigious resume, and has implemented a lot of innovative programs since he has been at the college, and he's going to explain to you his plan, uh, and proposal for the Dundee Education Technology Program, which the Dundee Community Association has already approved. So, without further ado, Dr. Clark, if you will introduce this program and our special guest tonight.
Hear me okay? If it's not about us, it's about the state college watching live. Okay. I'm not sure where to touch the microphone. I'll just bring you closer to me. There you go.
Perfect.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I wanna thank you so much for having me come out today to talk to you about the Dundee, uh, Community Promise Program. This is a program and initiative that we have put together at Southern Crescent Technical College that will help support Griffin Spalding High School students as well as our Delta Education students, uh, here in Spalding County. Uh, before I get started, I did wanna thank, um, some individuals who have been key to this effort to be able to take place, and so if you can please stand, uh, as I recognize you, uh, and these are individuals who are part of the Dundee Community Association Foundation who help support this effort, which I'll explain to you in a few moments. But Mr. Tom and Gail Gardner, you can please stand. Mr. Harry Kibo. M. Currybo, Kibo, I apologize. Ms. Elaine White. Individuals have been key to helping to support this initiative that we have, and I just wanna thank you all for coming out today to not only listen to the presentation that I'm gonna make to the Board of Education, but for your support of Southern Crescent Technical College. So, thank you so much for that. I also just wanna take some time before I get started to acknowledge our elected officials here today that are here to support this effort. Representative Karen Mathiak, Mayor Doug Holberg, Commissioner Gwen Flowers, thank you so much for coming out today. Dundee Community Association Technical Education Program, the Promise Program, is an initiative that we put together to help support Griffin Spalding High School students. To give you some history about the Dundee Community Association, this was created back several years ago when the Dundee, uh, Mills closed. During that time that we were working with the Dundee Mills over several years, the college Adult Education Program worked with them to help support Adult Education students in the Mills. They provided training to those students in various capacities, whether it was ESL training or ABE training. Throughout the time that the Dundee Mills was open, they also collected money through different forms of payment in their vending machines, and that money was collected over several years. That money added up, and that money was utilized to help support these foundation funds that were gifted to the college. Those funds that were gifted to the college, we're utilizing to help support this initiative, and this board right here who helped support this initiative gave us the authorization to be able to move this money towards to help support Griffin Spalding students as they make their transition to Southern Crescent Technical College as well as our Delta Education students. As you can see up there, the Dundee Promise Program is designed to support Griffin Spalding students who are graduating seniors, who are coming into this current academic year, as well as the Delta Education students who are at Southern Crescent Technical College. The program ensures that students have a seamless pathway to Southern Crescent Technical College, and they are able to get exposed and begin to take classes towards our credit programs that exist, and it could be any of our high-demand programs that exist such as welding, our allied health programs, our information technology programs, logistics, our transportation, anything that they wanna take. This program provides up to two semesters of tuition assistance once they complete their financial aid application. So, any student from Griffin Spalding Schools, Griffin High or Spalding High, who comes to Southern Crescent College beginning this fall can apply for this program, and when they are able to apply for the financial aid and that is completed, their balance will be covered through this foundational fund that exists for them. Any student in Griffin Spalding High Schools.
That's amazing. Phenomenal.
These are some of the qualifications that exist for the program. Resident of Spalding County and a U.S. citizen, being enrolled if they are a Delta Education student in our GED program, or they are from one of the Spalding County High Schools that here in the county. Uh, they have to, uh, be enrolled within one semester of finishing Spalding County or Griffin High School. They have to enroll in at least nine credit hours, and that, what that means is that those students will, uh, be able to take up to three classes, sometimes four classes, depending on their credit load, towards their degree program. The goal of this is to be able to get students into the pathway towards earning a credential at the college. More than likely, a student can earn a technical certificate of completion once they complete this program successfully. In addition to that, we are requiring students who participate in this program to apply for their federal student aid and also for the HOPE grant. So, any balance that exists, um, this fund will be able to support that, uh, effort in terms of ensuring that they are in school and that they have no barriers financially. This right here is just some of the impact that I wanted to share with the board and how we feel that this is going to be able to help support students from your school district. About fifteen percent of our total enrollment at Southern Crescent are from Griffin Spalding students, and about eleven, eleven percent from dual enrollment. My vision is that that percentage will continue to rise as this program exists because the board has approved it for three years, and so we hope that with this effort to be able to share it with you, and asking that you share it with, uh, the residents, with the students, and all others who are in the community, that this program is active and that we want people to participate, we expect that that percentage will continue to go up. Dual enrollment continues to do well here at the college, and that percentage that you see of eleven percent has grown about two to three percent over the past two years. In addition to that, you can see the number of students that will be impacted that we're projecting, uh, for Griffin Spalding Schools as well for a Delta Education program. And so that is really significant because, again, with the anticipation of those numbers continuing to rise, we hope to be able to get those numbers up to about two hundred students, uh, when we come around to the, to the, to the next fiscal year. Average savings that you're gonna see for students is about five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that is usually out-of-pocket cost after financial aid has been applied with the HOPE grant and, uh, the federal financial aid. And so for students to be able to not have that out-of-pocket expense, they can immediately go into the workforce basically debt-free. And so with all of the things that are happening in Spalding County, the great things that are happening in Spalding County, the industries that we support, uh, whether it's advanced manufacturing, uh, area, or it is our allied health partners with Wellstar, or it is our transportation partners, or it's our small businesses, any student from Griffin Spalding High School or a Delta Education students will have the opportunity to take advantage of these funds, and I am so excited about this. And again, I wanna thank all of the, of the Dundee Community Association Board for all of your support with this effort, because if it wasn't for their vision and for their support of this, I would not be standing here with you today. And so that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about this program.
McDonald?
Thank you, uh, Dr. Clark and distinguished guests for being here this afternoon first. How will we, as a, uh, organization, get the word out to our current Griffin and Spalding High School students? How will we work in, together to do that?
So, we sent out letters recently to all of the Griffin Spalding High School students who recently graduated, uh, this past, uh, May, and so all of them have a copy of a letter that was signed by me explaining the program in more detail, uh, and how they can begin to apply. But that's just one part of how we communicate. Anything that you can put on social media to be able to talk about this, or reaching out to your constituents, however way you decide to do that, just letting people know that Southern Crescent has this program for Griffin Spalding High School students. We want and will be a first-choice option for students. We wanna be that, and we hope to become that, I should say, a first-choice option for them, but that is the best way to do it. And even here, me being here today, putting this on social media and saying, "This is a great program, take advantage of it." Students are still thinking about, "What are their options for higher education?" And we have a local option right here in Spalding County.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Dr. Clark, could you, uh, share that PowerPoint with, uh, either Dr. Simmons or our communication person so that we may be able to get it and share it?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other board member? I think this is absolutely fantastic, and, uh, since the time that you had shared that you wanted to even come and present it, I've been thrilled, and I, we're eliminating the barriers, uh, for, for students to be able to continue their, uh, higher education, and I just think it's incredible. So, again, thank you to you and the hard work that you've done to be able to, to make this happen.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Ms. Schoolboy? And Paul? Vision.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right. Thank you so very much for being, yes?
Chairman Dawson, if this is okay, if I can get a photo with you and the board and with our elected officials and the Dundee Community Association, uh, members?
Absolutely. Well, we, we don't have our board in here, but we can use, is this the best place? Adam? Adam in here? Oh, he's, he's prepared and ready? And we will also say, we will invite you to stay for the rest of our workshop, but we also know that you may have busy schedules, and you will be welcome to leave and not feel as though you have to after the, after the photo. It's good. Karen, how are you?
Somebody left a, Karen, somebody left a, no.
Harry? All right, board members, uh, we will now move on to, under Presentations and Discussions, item two, our student representative on our governance team. Let you know that I have had further conversation with the collaborative, and at this time, they are not wanting to submit the request that they had already submitted. Uh, they do want to have some, so, some...
Mr. Chair, I have a question, point of order?
Yes, sir.
The student representative on GSCS governance team has nothing to do with the Youth Ambassador Commission. It has nothing to do with it. So, why is this item being presented at this time on this agenda item?
Because at the last meeting, we had them both combined, and I wanted to...
It was not stated on the agenda like that. It was GSCS Governance Team Student Member, Student Rep. And in developing this policy, Yak was never mentioned. So, to stick to the agenda as a work session, uh, if we're gonna talk about what the makeup of the governance team will be, uh, we need to stick to that. Yak being a part of this discussion is not germane to this agenda item.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, and that is what I was letting you know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, we had...
But I would like to have discussion about the student representative as it relates to the items that we discussed the last time, uh, to make sure that everybody's just in sync with everything.
Sure, that is what I was getting ready to open up for discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Would you like to lead?
Absolutely. So, uh, the last time we were here, we were able to discuss a lot of great things as it relates to the student representative on the Griffin Spalding Board of Education. And to date, uh, we have not formalized a written document for everybody to see, but we will do that moving forward. Just looking at maybe four things that we want to consider in having a student representative, and the first thing is to amplify the student voice or the scholar voice in our district. Can everybody agree to that? Okay? And then the second thing was to enhance the communication between the board and the scholars that we serve. Third is to enhance collaboration between the board and scholars, and teach scholars the importance of civic involvement, and expose our scholars to Board of Education functions, and preparing them to be possible fu, uh, future civic leaders. Is to expose our scholars to Board of Education functions and preparing them to possibly be future civic leaders. Okay? And then I think the next thing that we need to discuss, what will be the requirements? If there's a GPA requirement, what is everybody comfortable with? And the selection process, I think we need to align that, um, develop that timeline, and then I think after that, we would be ready to start doing interviews or however we want the selection process to start.
Okay. Any other board members have some comments or questions or things to share at this time?
Mr. Dawson? I do. Mr. Brown, your second, your second qualification was what? Communication between...
Enhance communication between the board and scholars.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I think this is a good thing. I, uh, I've said that before publicly. I'll say it again. I, I'm all for the, the, the things that you have mentioned here, Mr. Brown, the voice, the collaboration, the communication, the civic involvement, exposed to functions that we, that we partake in, and to help build civic leaders, and, and we can, obviously can discuss the requirements and what it would take for a student to be on the board, but I'm, I'm all for this. I think it's good. I don't have any reservation about it.
I appreciated the document that you gave us last time that had to do with voting rights versus non-voting rights. Uh, I definitely would be in favor of non-voting rights. All kind of implications behind that, you know? We had to be voted into the position that we have, and I think we have a responsibility in that aspect of it. I also like the idea of not asking a student to do it for an entire year, maybe doing two semesters, I mean, one...
Semester, yeah.
Each semester, just so as not, you know, 'cause you may have a student that wants to do it, that plays soccer, couldn't do it that semester, but they might could do it the other semester. Also, maybe gives an opportunity for Spalding High to be representative one, one semester and, and Griffin High to be, and we may even wanna, obviously, we have the academy, too, that we might wanna work into that process, so, uh, I would be in favor of the, what that process would look like, maybe getting some input also from our administrative team as to what they think would work so that we can help decipher. I don't wanna cause problems by creating things, uh, but I like the idea of the student representation.
Are we, are we ready to decide, like, what the maybe minimum GPA requirement should be?
In your experience, and, and I know that you work with a nationwide group with regard to things similar to this, what has been, what have you seen in your, your workings with your nationwide groups? And, and even local groups that you...
Local groups, yeah. So, in Carrie's district in Texas, it is a two-point-five GPA or higher. City Schools of Decatur is a two-point-five or higher, so I would say two-point-five is a starting minimum GPA or higher. So I would say 2.5 is a starting minimum GPA or higher. And then they also put in there to have like a parent guardian recommendation letter. So the parent is understanding what they're writing and, you know, getting signed up for. And then they must have a, in good standing, they must do a swear to intent to do, so we said a semester versus a two-year commit, but a semester commitment to the role. And it talks about the board norms and protocols. Then it also has a link where they can find like the meeting calendar for the meetings, just so that they are aware of those. The parent and guardian recommendation letter, be in good standing with a 2.5 GPA and exhibit acceptable behavior attested by two scholars, so two scholars, whether they're in high school or middle school, have to write a recommendation letter from them. And then some type of administrator at their school as well, or someone that they've been in contact with.
Okay.
And then it says, one that I really liked was submit a course of study plan so that the board is able to see where they are in their matriculation and sign by the school counselor. So those would be the one, two, three, four, six things under the requirements.
Is that something that maybe we, yourself and maybe Ms. McDonald or another committee member can, can work on and then be able to put it all kind of in a form for us to be able to then look at at our next meeting?
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, if you would like to appoint a committee to do that, we'll be more than happy to, to serve at that pleasure.
Okay. I would love for you to chair that since you have taken such great initiative already. And is there's another volunteer that'd be willing to work with Mr. Brown to do that?
Let me think. I will. I'll work with Mr. Brown.
Okay. That would be wonderful. And then if we can also have maybe the system, Mr. Dr. Simmons, to begin thinking about whoever that, I don't know if it's going to be teaching, I don't know who it is as far as deciding how we're going to put this out there for people for application, if it, you know, would love just some of your thoughts and ways in which that would also help. Anybody else? Anything? All right.
I just have a comment, Mr. Dawson. I, Mr. Brown, I just wanted to thank you publicly for your work on this and I appreciate you for that.
Thank you so much for our scholars.
All right. We will move on to item number three, which is the update on our speed zone and stop arm cameras. Are the lights flashing?
Good afternoon, Chairman Dawson, School Board members, Dr. Simmons. Here to give an update on the speed zone and stop arm cameras in our school system. Our non-negotiables will be professional, be accountable, communicate effectively. Our mission and vision, broad maps of success, today we organizational operational efficiency. Speed zones. School zone means the area within 1,000 feet of the boundary of any public or private elementary school or secondary school. Purpose of the reduced speed is to give drivers more time, direct pedestrians and to give children more time to avoid cars. Spalding County SO. I received a call today from Captain Corley, who helps coordinate the lights and cameras for the county, but I mean by the county, all the schools outside of the city limits. The lights on northbound, northbound on Hill Street, now Jordan Hill and northbound on Wilson Road and near Future Road Elementary are out right now. They have some battery issues and he said they would get on there soon as possible. He called me probably out before this meeting, so he'll take care of that. On Jackson Road, we have new and larger lights on Jackson Road, which is State Route 155, State Route 16 by the Griffin High School bus entrance. Additional lights and new signage will be coming. The light's already there. Anytime you have school lights and cameras on the state route, you must have DOT, Georgia DOT permission and they've already approved those and that's up. And other than those two locations I mentioned, all cameras and lights are working. Our next step during this month, Dr. Simmons and I will meet with Sheriff Dix and Captain Corley to discuss more lights and our, and cameras, lights rather, lights, additional lights in our schools, often in county. You know, school safety is very important, so make sure our kids are safe walking to and from school. Griffin PD in the city limits, we met Lieutenant Zimmerman, Dr. Simmons and I did at several locations. We have new lights, North Hill Street and Crescent. All lights are working in the zones. Our next, we have a meeting with the Public Works Director to talk about additional lights in our city schools, adding more lights a little farther out. Stop arm cameras. The new law, I'm sure you've seen on TV, it's different social media outlets, 40 that six, one sixty-three A, unlawfully passing a school bus. It's approved in the last legislative session. Went into effect July 1st of this year and it's elevated, high and aggravated misdemeanor, which means a high, high, higher fine and more time. For instance, if you're charged with this crime, it goes from $250 now to $1,000. You get community service, 12-month jail or probation, defensive driving course or anything else the judge seems, seems fit to give you. We met with Judge Thacker, our state court judge, a while back and he said 85% of the tickets were coming from North Expressway and Allen Street. 85% of the tickets during the school year, over 200 tickets per month. We were able to fix that, elevate that. Me with Mr. Martin Transportation, the school bus is on North Expressway and Allen Street, but now just turned onto Allen Street and not stopping Expressway. So you won't get as many citations for our citizens. Addie's Law. If you know Addie, she was an 8-year-old Henry County student, Addie Pierce, who was struck and killed crossing the street, going to her school, going to the school bus. That law encourages school districts to prioritize bus routes that avoid students crossing roadways with a speed limit exceeding 40 miles an hour or more. That's what Addie's Law is. Now, the photo you see here, there are times when you can pass a school bus. If you look to, picture on your far left, if you're looking that way, on your right, two-lane road, if you're behind a bus with the lights on and arm out, you cannot pass the bus from behind or coming towards the bus on a two-lane road. Center photo, one-two-lane road, no divide, same thing, you can't pass with lights on, stop arm out in either direction. Now the law permits, picture to the left, where you see the grass, divided highway, if there's a medium concrete, medium wall, grass, a divider, you can't pass from behind the bus but coming towards the bus as you see, you can proceed with caution. This photo and other safety tips on all of our social, our school district outlets and other social media. Thanks to Adam and Laura for that.
Questions? Board members, any questions? Ms. McDonald?
Thank you. Mr. Dawson? Mr. Britt, you said last year, last school year, we had over 200, 200 citations with regard to people passing a school bus and most, all of that or most of that was on, on North Expressway?
Yes, that was mostly, he's going, you're going northbound in the southbound lanes. I'm sure people thinking they could just keep going.
Right.
And they kept going, they got citations as well, the law has changed.
But we didn't have anyone cited for, in, in other school zones? It was just 1941 where the issue was?
There were more all over the county, but that was, 85% were from that one location.
85% from this one location? Okay.
And it was 200 a month, is what he said.
Total, that's total for countywide, over 200 per month. But 85% of the total was from North Expressway and Allen Street, that one location.
200 a month? I mean, that's ridiculous.
You gotta think about the super statements. It was in the highway. Yeah.
People, that's why the law's in place. That's why people get citations.
That's also why legislation has increased it from 250 to a thousand.
Two thousand dollars.
I'm all for that. I'm just kind of stunned at the 200 a month. When you said 200, I thought that was, you know, 200 for the school year, but 200 a month and 85% of that is 1941, I get that. Oh, wow.
And Judge Thacker, he has court every one month, the third Wednesday of every month, he has to court just for, just for that. I'll be going next week on the 14th to see how that is ran. Also, I feel to mention, if you're under 21 and you receive one of these citations, you get six points on the license. Four points for anything at that age, your license is pending for six months, but this just, this one citation would be six points. If you're over 21, if you get 15 points within 24 months, your license is pending for six months. So thankfully the state is taking this very seriously, trying to keep our kids safe.
And I, my personal opinion is, is it's not us doing this that it is the law that has now been put into place, but us being able to help get that word out if we could social media this picture, but also the law that the OCDA where, you know, passing the school bus and that fine going from 250 to 1,000, that may get some folks' attention.
Yeah, we've done that on our social media pages and I think Adam got it out to Griffin Daily News too and the radio station, so.
Awesome.
It's been out a couple of weeks now.
Awesome.
And the new signage will be up and the additional lights will be up soon?
Yes.
For these two locations?
Lights are up, I think, the lights are up. Captain Corley said the signage is coming, new signage, the lights are up.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members?
I have one here.
Yes.
With this already, this being in operation, who's going to bear the expense of the, the extra signage and lights and who's bearing that? City, county or the company?
The county.
The county?
Yeah, for the county lights, yeah. For the signs, yeah.
Okay. So, so the company doesn't have any obligation to, to bear some of that burden?
What?
The company that we partner with, who, who's getting that third or the money?
You talking about the tickets or you talking about the signage?
The signs and, and the lights.
Uh, this, go ahead, Dr. Simmons. The signs are put up through the county, they're taking care of that, the shared department.
Right.
Uh, you talking about citations?
Uh, the lights, the.
All of that, the county.
Added lights, blinking lights, county?
Yes.
Okay.
So the county is taking care of the county and the city's taking care of the city?
Correct.
Okay.
We'll meet with Sheriff Dix soon and Ms. Eller, who's the Public Works Director for the city, to talk about adding lights for city and county. We'll partnership if need be to make sure we get that done. It's about our kids being safe.
My understanding is, is the law does not require the lights. I think, I think we should help to try to require the lights. I think a ticket should not be given unless there's lights blinking, but that's just, I, I'm not a law enforcement officer, but I would like for us to continue to advocate so that our citizens know when tickets are being issued.
The tickets are written when the, when the lights are flashing and the cameras on those, those times at 25 miles an hour. Now, when the lights are off and it's 35 miles an hour and you go through that 50 then and the law enforcement stops, should that's on you?
Yep. I agree. Any other questions for Mr. Britt? Thank you so very much. Appreciate that. All right. We'll move on to our GMAS update.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Dawson, Board of Education Superintendent Simmons.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Hey.
Doing good. Hope you guys are doing well.
We are.
All right. So this afternoon, I have the honor to share with you our 2023, 2024 Georgia milestones results.
Can I ask Ms. Ray a question? We got the, the big, big in our packet, is what you gave us this afternoon, the same just, oh wait, so this, okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
The big one for the senior citizen.
And I'm just trying to make sure that this is, I don't think this is the updated copy. So this is it. Okay. My apologies. All right. Let's start over. Okay. And so you do have an updated copy after our prep. I wanted to provide you just a little bit more succinct report, so you should have a copy of that there at your table. And so as we go through, we know that we will adhere to our non-negotiables and this presentation will give an opportunity to share, share how all of the focus areas, which are literacy, enrollment, attendance, discipline and solving, all play together as we look at our outcomes, our student achievement outcomes. That leads us closer to our vision, distinctive brand, strong leaders, great schools, empowering our students, as we've already heard this afternoon, to graduate college and career-ready. As mentioned, I'll live mainly in the student achievement goal area. Nonetheless, we know that student achievement cannot be obtained without working with all of the goal areas that you see displayed on the screen. My session objectives are fourfold this afternoon. I want to communicate to you our 2324, our most recent Georgia milestones results. Talk to you about some of the trends that we are seeing, some of the challenges and some of the strengths of the data. And then finally, I want to make sure that I leave you knowing what our, which schools are designated schools and how we will be supporting them different through our University of Virginia Acceleration School Zones partnership. When we get into the Georgia milestones assessment system, as you see here on the screen, our assessments are broken down by end of grade that are given to grades three through eight in areas of English language, language arts, mathematics, science, and then eighth grade, social studies. Our end of course assessments are given to our high school students and there are four assessments as outlined on the screen. Please pay attention to the note there at the bottom of the screen. Due to the new math standards, I will not present to you any math milestone scores as they have not been released as of yet. We are anticipating they'll be released either late fall or early winter. So we will not have any mathematics data to share this afternoon. Before I get into the data, I want to give just a little bit of background information. This is particularly important because we know that this is the final year of our ESAR funds. We are closing those funds out by September of this year. So that we, we know that in 2019, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, there were some shifts and some things that occurred that, that impact some of the data that you'll see here today. First, I'll highlight some of our enrollment trends. We have had a loss of students since that time. Not only that, we know that our community also, you know, was impacted by the tornado and you'll see that the attendance trends along with that have suffered. In 2019, some students were just slow to returning back into the brick and mortar building. Also, many of our students were displaced even after the tornado. So in 2019, our attendance trends was, was 88% average daily attendance and then last year it was 92%. We have not yet got to the 95% average daily attendance, which is our goal for the district. Along with that, our special education population has increased to 15.2. And then around that same time, the nation began to experience this teacher shortage and it was, Griffin Spalding was not excluded from that teacher shortage. What you see on the screen as far as teaching experience in the Griffin Spalding County school system, we went from in the 2019 school year, only have 19 provisionally certified teachers, to last year having 74 provisionally certified. to last year having seventy-four provisionally certified teachers. And so all of those are just background factors that do impact some of the data that you'll see. Nonetheless, much of the ESER funding that we received, we did put that towards some of the challenges that we were experiencing. For example, we have provided teacher retention bonuses to our teachers. We have put forth efforts to assist teachers with their teacher certification by paying for some of those services directly to students. We have provided more extended learning, more professional learning days to teachers. We put in various safety measures to mitigate COVID-19. And one of the, the biggest investments, so to speak, is investing in our instructional material. And that came right around the time that we were transitioning from the RCD curriculum, which we know was more of a teacher-created curriculum, that as state mandates began to come about right around the same time as we were recovering from COVID-19, we began to see mandates on how we were to serve some of our most at-risk students at elementary, such as EIP. We went away from reduced class size. Also, we have to implement the mandates of House Bill 538. Dr. Greer talked to you about that at the last board meeting. And then also the implementation of new math standards. So that just gives you a background in terms of some of the things that have been going on in the district, not only in the district, around the state, and nationally. So as we begin to get into our data, I first want to share with you Lexile levels by grade, by grade band. And so Lexiles, if you may remember, this is a quantitative measure that allows us to look at students' reading ability or the difficulty of a text. And the range is from zero to sixteen hundred. And so you'll see that the state has given us, on your left-hand side, the measure at each grade level. And you will see that the Lexile for third grade, the target is for our students to be either at a five-twenty Lexile or above. And you can see what those metrics are for each grade level, all the way up to eleventh grade. If you'll focus your attention to the last column, these are our GSCS averages for the percentages of our students as measured by the Georgia milestones, who were reading at grade level or above. And then you're able to follow the chart across to see how we have fared since 2022, so for the last three years. You'll see that in three of the grade levels, in third grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade, we did see some decline. Nonetheless, you see some honorable mentions over to the right-hand side, and I'll just point out a few. While as a district, we have not yet got to, you know, the fiftieth percentile on all of our grade levels, but you do have schools such as Crescent's third, fourth, and also fifth grade, who are at sixty-two, sixty-one, and seventy-seven percent respectively. And Futural Road's fifth grade, students are reading, eighty-one percent of their students are reading on grade level, just to mention a few. Next, those are celebrations. You may clap for that.
Absolutely.
Next, we'll go ahead and get into our elementary school end-of-grade assessment results. And so there's a lot of information for you to take away on this slide. But what I've tried to communicate for you is on the, the bottom left, this shows third graders in 2022, a separate set of grade, third graders in twenty-three, and then another set of grade, third grade students in twenty-four. When we look at our third grade group over the past three years, we see that last year's third grade, and those are the students who entered into kindergarten during the pandemic, you'll see that they did not improve. Nonetheless, the chart right to the right of that, if you look at the third grade students that entered third grade in 2021 as a cohort, so now we're looking at the same students, when those students moved from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, you can see almost a ten percentage point gain. And so we are making improvement. However, you're able to take away from this slide some of the impacts that I've described from COVID-19. I would also like to mention, hidden here is that one of our schools that is an honorable mention, Jackson Road third grade students, although our students overall in Griffin Spalden did not improve their performance, Jackson Road students made double-digit gains, so at least ten points from last year, and that is a celebration. The next slide, we are often curious as to how do we compare against the state and the RISA? And so this slide does definitely indicate to us that we have some work to do, because you'll see that Griffin Spalden is at the bottom of our RISA. There are seventy-two elementary schools in our RISA, and the average scores for third grade is thirty-two percent. But you will see that Crescent did, they were right there in the RISA. And then you'll see Jordan Hill, Jackson Road, Futural, and Moreland where they compare in the RISA. If the schools are not listed, then that means they are below the GSCS average. Moving to fourth grade, I've outlined for you, this chart indicates that in 2019, we were at twenty-seven point one-one percent of our students. And I also want to pause to remind you that I'm only sharing with you the students that are either green or blue, proficient or distinguished, because those are the levels that are considered, considered already on grade level. However, when we receive our CCRPI, the yellow students, the ones that are developing, those will be added in. But for sake of today's presentation, they are not added. So what you see here for fourth grade is that we did decline from 2019. There was no milestones in the 2020 year, but in 22, there was a decline. And so you start seeing that we're beginning to inch back up just incrementally in fourth grade. And we can celebrate here that Jordan Hill had a double-digit gain over their last year, fourth grade ELA performance. This illustrates for you our performance as it compares to our RISA. Again, there are seventy-two schools in our RISA. And here, our GSCS average, while it was eighteen point seven-five, we did have several schools that exceeded the GSCS average, and then they exceeded the RISA average. And here, I want to celebrate Crescent because they exceeded the state average for fourth grade English Language Arts with thirty-eight point three percent of their students being either proficient or distinguished. That's a celebration. Moving forward to fifth grade, what you'll see in 2019, we were at thirty-five point eight-six of our fifth grade students being proficient or distinguished. We had a decline in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three. But you can see we're yellow in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That means that we improved from last year, but we have not yet made it back to our 2019 performance. There are several schools in the fifth grade who had double-digit gains. Those schools are Futural and Jackson in English Language Arts. That's a celebration. I have listed here, science, and I'm about to get, I'll get to that just in a little bit. So if we go ahead and look at how we compare to the state and to the RISA, what you'll see here is that Futural has exceeded the state average with fifty percent of their students in fifth grade being proficient and distinguished. That is a celebration. Crescent exceeds the RISA, and then you see three schools that are approaching the RISA average. This is fifth grade, science, and you're able to see on the bottom chart how we have performed since 2019. And I'll just remind us that student performance did improve in fourth and fifth grade ELA and here in fifth grade, science. Okay? This shows you comparatively to the RISA and to the state. And we have two celebrations. Jackson Road exceeded the state, and Crescent Road exceeded the state average. Let's go ahead and give it up for those two schools. So as you can see, there are certainly some areas for elementary that we need to continue to work on and strive towards. But we see that there are several schools that are really beginning to rebound and make a, make a rebound back to their 2019 performance. Now, we'll go ahead and get into our middle school. Here with middle school, I have put dividers so that you're able to see English Language Arts separate from math, from science, and from social studies. I'm reminding you that there are no new math data points for this year. And then the science and social studies is only taken in the eighth grade. We did see improvement in eighth grade English Language Arts. And then when we, when we look at a cohort of middle school students, again, that means students that entered into the sixth grade in twenty-one, twenty-two, and matriculated through our middle schools through eighth grade, you'll see that the performance went from twenty-three point nine-eight to twenty-six point seven when they did leave in the eighth grade. Some challenges is that overall, though, eighth grade, science did remain nearly the same. And then there, there was a slight decline in our social studies performance. Here is sixth grade, English Language Arts, and we did see a decline in sixth grade. Compared to the RISA, though, we do see that Carver was a school in, in sixth grade, English Language Arts, that was just above our GSCS average, but not yet at the RISA average. When we look at seventh grade, this is where we did see improvement in English Language Arts in middle school. And we want to celebrate Rehoboth Road Middle School because they did see double-digit gains in their seventh grade, English Language Arts. With that being said, there are thirty-one middle schools in our RISA, and you see Rehoboth was ranked at twelfth for seventh grade, English Language Arts, and they did exceed the RISA average and were almost at the state average. Okay, moving to eighth grade, you will see here how we have not yet got back to our 2019 performance, but we have been increasing just incrementally over the last two years. Eighth grade, English Language Arts compared to the RISA and to the state, we do see where both Carver and Rehoboth were above our GSCS average. Eighth grade, social studies, from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, you see, we've had a decline from eighteen to thirteen point eight-seven. Compared to the RISA, and compared to GSCS, Rehoboth and Carver are above the GSCS average. Eighth grade, science, we continue to struggle here. We continue to support our teachers here. Oftentimes, when there is a teacher shortage, we have found that science and social studies are those two areas where we are having some difficulty sometimes with having the most certified teachers or qualified and experienced teachers in these areas. These are our results compared to the RISA and to the state. And finally, I'll move into our high school performance. As we look at our high school, there are twenty-seven high schools in our RISA. And with that being said, when we look at our American literature, Spalding High School was at twenty-nine point oh-nine, Griffin High School twenty-five point three-four, and you'll see that AZ Kelsey is listed. I list AZ Kelsey here because I remind us that they are a school. And with smaller numbers of students, oftentimes it's difficult for them to make the achievement rate as our traditional high schools and as some other high schools, also with their transient populations. And so these, of course, are conversations that we should continue to have in terms of how we're serving our scholars at the alternative school and just as a district. But I do list that for your viewing.
Can I ask a quick question there?
Yes, sir.
Are AZ, the alternative school, and the academy all put together?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. So the students who are tribunal there punitively, they are at which school? Y'all help me. Is that the academy? Okay, so they're at the Achievement Center. I'm sorry.
Academy's Middle School.
And so their data goes back to Griffin and Spalden.
Okay.
But the students that stay there long-term and graduate, that's the data that you're seeing reflected there. So for instance, as we look at our biology, I do not list any biology scores for AZ Kelsey, because you have to have at least fifteen students for those scores to count towards their student achievement. And so perhaps, depending upon the grade level that the students were in, they may not reflect in those scores. And it just makes it more difficult for a cohort of students to improve. Here, you do see Spalding High School was ranked thirteenth out of the twenty-seven, twenty-seven high schools. So you do begin to see some improvement as their performance is thirty-two point three. Moving forward, this is U.S. history. And again, we, we don't list any AZ Kelsey scores here. And you're able to see how Griffin and Spalden rank amongst the twenty-seven high schools in our RISA. In closing, we do have a state-identified schools. And so these schools are the schools that unfortunately have some of the lowest student achievement beyond the RISA, but amongst elementary or middle schools in the state. And so Ann Street is also a tier-four CSI school. That just means that they have been on the list at least three years. This is a three-year list. Had we took, had we been able to review their performance last year for the indicators, Ann Street could have possibly exited the list because they had significant gains. Nonetheless, it is a three-year list because the state is looking to see that that improvement is sustained over time, that they're not on a list and off of, off a list. Then you see Atkinson and Moore, they are listed as CSI schools, and they are supported by our UVA partnership. And then Moreland and Oars, those schools are what's, what's called ATS.I. ATS.I is a targeted school improvement, and it is because of the performance or the lack of performance of their special population students, special education. So we have been supporting them along with Charles Kelly and the Special Ed Department to really identify students. And I'll be transparent with you, Moreland and Oars, they were within three students. That had those students been proficient or distinguished, they could have perhaps avoided a list. But that is just really some of the nuances that we have to attend to with the state designations. So some of the supports that were given specifically for the designated schools, these schools at the top, the CSI, Ann Street, Atkinson, and Moore, they have the support of an additional structured literacy coach that has been, the salary has been provided by the state, by the Department of Education, with the main intent to get the reading levels improved at our schools. And so they are supported by Central Office as well as by the training by the Department of Education. We continue to have two school improvement coordinators. That's Tracy Sims, Ms. Lashonda Akers, and they specifically work with the schools that are listed here on the screen. And then we have a diff, a district plan of support. We are monitored by the State Department. I meet with them monthly with my team, and we share with them some of the supports, such as differentiated tiered support from teaching and learning from Dr. Greer's department, Mr. Kelly's department, and various divisions amongst Central Office.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
All right. Dr. Taylor, so we, structured literacy coaches, that's different from, so what, is that an additional person? So like, for example, if a school has two, then it may be three?
It is.
All right. So do we have a breakdown of which schools will have, you know, two academic coaches, three, or which schools have one?
Yes. And so Ann Street now has three. More has three. And Atkinson has two. And Atkinson, yes, Atkinson has two. And so the difference is, is that they, they can, the structured literacy coaches can support grades K through five, but K two first and literacy first. It's really a focus on getting our young scholars reading by the time they get to third grade.
And, and, and that is in support with OG for K through second? And that is in support with OG for K through second? That is in support with what the current instructional coach does on top of the structured person?
Okay, so Orton Gillingham is a structured literacy program, and so the K two structured coach, again, is, that's the first order of business, but we know that our K two scholars also have to learn standards, right? So the Orton Gillingham is a phonics program. So the K two structured literacy, they focus mainly on the phonics, the phonological awareness, all of those skills that are necessary to get our scholars reading, and then they can support the Savis curriculum, math learning plans, everything secondary.
So in having all these plans that relates to it, like our literacy coaches having the plans, what is our plan as a district to effectively utilize them to improve our teacher performance?
So they have a coaching plan, and so they tier teachers. That is to really identify who needs what level of support. They help with the MAP fluency, you know, that is the screener that is state-approved that we must provide, and so the district will be supporting them in that realm. So the district, the structured literacy coach will continue to receive support from us, just so that that's seamless, but then they will get additional support from the Georgia Department of Education that the other coaches would not necessarily receive. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and to answer my question, I just, I would like to see if I can just see some, I know, because we have a strategic plan, and you guys have a district plan of support, if I could just see how they fall into it from each of those categories, because I just think that there's some opportunity improvement on how we can use our instructional coaches. And Dr. Simmons, I really would like to schedule a meeting with you within the next week so I could sit down and talk with you and give you my thoughts on that.
Okay. Absolutely. And so in closing, and so I've shared, I know a lot of data with you today, and so really in closing, what I hope that I've communicated is that we are not back to our pre-pandemic levels of performance. We are not yet at the RISA. When I talk to the principals about their school improvement planning and their school improvement goal setting, one of the things that I talk to them about is that we cannot compete globally until we compete first within our district, within our RISA, and within our state. And so that is a goal of ours, and that's what I communicate to principals. And you can see that some of the schools have had an opportunity to put some things in place, and in putting those practices in place, mainly strong Tier One instruction with teachers that have high expectations for their students and monitor student progress and respond to the needs of students, you see where we're making those gains. But there are still some ways to go with some of our schools and pockets, and so we'll continue to work until we're pervasive with our practices and some of the things that we're doing. We are, we do still have professional learning days. On those days, we're providing the support for teachers so that they can implement the curriculum. We have received really, I'm going to say, better feedback from last year in that we were really just trying to get instructional materials in the hands of our teachers and in front of our scholars while we still had extra funds to leverage, and so we kind of went all-in with that last year. This year, our teachers came in feeling good, renewed, and just more confident in knowing the instructional material. We'll continue to support them with those professional learning days. We'll continue to support them with letters. You see some of the things there on the screen. We feel like we had our, some good footing with implementing the new math standards. We'll continue to support teachers with that, but I want to just make sure everyone knows, now we have to start implementing the new language arts standards, and so that is going to be undertaken this year. Continue with the mentoring program. I have talked to you about teachers' teaching experience, and we do have to utilize provisional teachers, and many of them come in and they're doing a great job. With those instructional materials in their hands, they can do even a better job, and so we'll continue to support our induction phase teachers. And at the high school, want to make sure that we know that with our end-of-course test, we have been on the block schedule, and that has presented us some challenges. That means that students have to, after four months of sitting, have to face an end-of-course test, and so we have stretched the end-of-course, the four areas that I presented, American Literature, Algebra, Biology, and U.S., we no longer offer those on the block. Those are now year-long courses to give our students longer to sit with the curriculum before they have to take an end-of-course test. Those are just a few of the things that we're doing to support our teachers and to support our scholars, and we look forward to the CCRPI. It'll be released coming in the fall. So pretty much the data that I've shared with you today will go into that state database, and you'll be able to see, I'm sorry, something flying in my face, but you'll be able to see the overall content mastery and closing gaps for all of our schools coming in the fall. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions? Comments? Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I, I sit here very concerned because we're going, we're trending the wrong way. I mean, that's, when I saw the information that was in our packets that was delivered last week, and then I'm really concerned. And I also wanted to ask you a question about Savis. Is that a reading platform thing?
Yes.
Okay. I've done some research on what the Georgia DOE recommends for districts to use, and Savis is pretty much at the very, I guess my question is, how do we, as an organization, decide what platform we will choose and purchase to help our teachers, help our kids learn to read? How is that decided? Who decides that?
We, the community decides, and so we went through a textbook adoption before selecting Savis, and so that was two years ago, because last year was our implementation year. And yes, last year Savis did not have the highest of rating on the Georgia Department of Education, but since then, they have responded to those ratings, and now they're higher-rated. And so they are an approved instructional material, and when we talk about House Bill 538, we have to select material that has been Georgia DOE-approved, so Savis is one of those.
Because when I talk to teachers out in the field, and especially elementary teachers, they tell me that the Savis program is very difficult for them to utilize based on printing things out or just trying to research what they need for a particular child, and I don't know, when you say "community," define "community" for me.
So teachers were able to be on the review committee. We sent material to each school. We opened the review up here at Central Office for parents and community stakeholders to come in, and when they did, that they rated or ranked them. We had a rubric where they rated and gave their feedback.
What other, what other programs were being looked at other than Savis? Do you recall?
I know that we looked at HMH, which ended up being what we selected for middle school, but I can get you that full list.
Okay.
And if Dr. Griff, she's here, I know she knows it better than I do.
And I'd like to have the list of the, I think it's 15 that the state recommends in order of their first choice all the way down. Is that correct? That's the way I've been told. I don't know if that's true or not, because I don't.
I can provide that for you.
Okay.
But it is on the DOE website.
Is there, is there anything that we do as an organization to get feedback? Now we're two years in with Savis, is that correct? Is there any way that we get feedback from teachers?
We do.
How often do we do that?
Well, we have an open survey, and so at any time, they can give feedback, but HR gives a employee engagement survey where we get feedback, and I think that's done twice per year.
Because we all know that if a child can read at the end of the third grade, their success rates go up exponentially, and I'm just, I sit here and I'm in shock, really, because we're not trending in the right direction.
Well, not necessarily so. Now, third grade, there was a decline, but when you look at fourth grade and fifth grade, we are trending upward.
Dr. Simmons?
So, Ms. McDonald, thank you for the candid feedback. I would offer that you look a little bit deeper holistically before we give people the impression that the sky is falling.
I didn't say that.
I didn't say that. You said it. I said you'd give them the impression. When you, as the member of the board, the governance team, express that type of concern without fully understanding the curriculum, the instructional materials, without having gone through the depths of acknowledging where students are, where they need to be, and what it takes to do that, without speaking about the Department of Education, and I'll end quickly. While I respect the Department of Education, I also know that if they had a silver bullet, it would have been fired by now, and the scenario or the solution would be here. What I want you to take from what I just said, though, if you look at a cohort of students who came into the school district and had apple-to-apple comparison of, one, high-quality instructional material, which we just purchased a year ago, two, a high-quality teacher, which I've said for three years, we don't have those persistently and pervasively in every school, and then, three, a persistent instructional framework in which the delivery can be counted on. Before we can get to those things, it would be ill-advised to say we're going in the wrong direction. I would agree with you if pieces of the data truly indicated we were going backwards. We have more students who are showing growth. We have more schools who are showing growth today in this quote-unquote "post-pandemic" world than we've ever had. I think the intent of the conversation was to remind you where we came from, but to also let you know that we're not yet done, much like the article that I shared back with you as a board. Everyone talks about what students aren't doing. What I want you to understand is students aren't the only ones. This is about adult actions coupled with student learning opportunities and learning outcomes. I appreciate the concern, but if I'm honest, I disagree with going the wrong direction or trending backwards. And if you didn't say that, then I heard it differently, but I don't want anyone to think that I can wake up tomorrow morning, show up here, and be okay with us going the wrong direction. That is not the case, because I would have told you that beforehand. I would never let you walk into a meeting knowing that we're not educating or believing we're not educating students, but if you think we're not, I'm more than happy to show you in multiple ways how we are, and then ask that you go and speak to those who are teaching them, coupled with those who are raising them, to best understand what we're doing. Thanks.
Any other?
Dr. Taylor, I'd also like a, an individual school report. Is there any way that that can be generated for us?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I go to the DOE website, but that's like trying to find a mouse in a haystack.
I have something for you that's a little bit easier.
Okay, because it's, I'm just not, it would take me forever to get the information I'm trying to get to.
Okay.
And that goes along with the comment that I wanted to also make, that the way that this is presented really helps me to be able to see it when you give that information and then be able to see those percentages with the state or RISA and where our schools are, so.
I have that for you.
But I also just wanted, just one other comment with regard to Dr. Simmons' statement. When I'm looking at the third-grade Lexiles levels by grade, it's minus 5.1. I don't know how many students that represents. How many students does that represent over the whole third grade? Is that a percentage? Is it a?
These are percentages, but I can provide numbers.
Well, I'm just curious, but you know, we aren't trending in the right direction, and you know, that's all I'm going to say about it. I understand what you said. I respect what you said, but I'm really concerned. Thank you.
Any other board members?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
So, Dr. Taylor, first I want to say to our scholars, you are amazing. You absolutely rock. You know, not all the time can you just say about a test. I was not a great test taker when I was in school, but we did what we needed to do. And to our educators out there, thank you for what you do daily, showing up and teaching our scholars. I answered, you answered my first question as it relates to the instructional coaches. And so I'm going to wait for that follow-up to see what the coaching plan and all that is about, but going back to when we were talking about our instructional coaches, the structured ones, and we started talking about Orton Gillingham, and you know, being that for K through second. And so how do our third-grade results from GMAS align with our teachers' implementation of OG?
You know, in talking to teachers and even principals, they correlate Orton Gillingham to improved performance. I'll give you some examples of that, you know, and what I'm trying to paint a picture of is you're looking at third-grade students year to year, but then when you look at a cohort of students, last year's third grade was a higher-performing group of students. Some examples of that is we had the state school superintendent that came to Atkinson, that came and celebrated Jordan Hill, that celebrated Crescent last year, because those schools were making like 10 to 15 percentage point gains.
Yeah.
And what you, what we have to remember is that third grade is the first state standardized testing year, and so the data that we have on our scholars in kindergarten and first grade and second grade are measures such as Orton Gillingham, and what you find with that, those are teacher-assessed scores. So sometimes you'll see just a little bit of discrepancy, if you will, with a teacher that has sat with a teacher, believes in, sat with a student, believes in the kid, and when they go to score, sometimes those scores can be a little bit inflated. And so the first measure that you really have is when those students get in third grade and they take the Georgia milestones. And so our Orton Gillingham data is strong. We're showing that students are picking up those phonological awareness skills, those phonics skills. However, last year's group of third-grade students, they had more gaps to fill. The previous year's third graders, the ones that are in fourth grade, the data by which you're looking at, those students had a pre-K year, those foundational years, and they were able to take that learning and have been able to fare well. So yes, Orton Gillingham is a, when we talk about vetted curriculum, that's how we got Orton Gillingham even before I was here. That is a highly-recognized structured program that we implemented even before the state of Georgia said, move from balanced literacy to structured literacy. So yes, it's promising, but last year's third grade, what that indicates to us is that they have more learning gaps that we have to fill than the previous year.
And to your point where you talked about where the state school superintendent came, looking at it, let me see, I think this is right, was, it was a 10-point gain. It was like 9.1 to 21%. So, you know, definitely salute the instructional leader, Ms. Campbell, that was there that worked with those teachers and everybody that was there on that team. And so if it's, and to superintendent's point, you said something that, you know, we do have scholars that have made gains, and we are here to celebrate all of our scholars' gains. That's why we do PBIS, to celebrate their good behavior, and that's why we have celebrations, pep rallies for the milestone, to get them excited. And so we celebrate and we see all of the gains that all of our scholars are doing, and we see what our teachers are doing as well. And so to that, through the PowerPoint presentation, like on this one, on this slide, you have strengths of the data. And so when looking at that on various slides, you saw at Jackson Road Elementary School, they had various slides, you saw at Jackson Road Elementary School, they had double-digit gains at Jackson Road Elementary School. Can this be replicated at other schools?
And then, yes, and in a sense, it is.
The answer is emphatically yes.
Mm-hmm.
But what we have to first replicate are the inputs. And, board, I want to be clear about what an input is. An input is not a child showing up at school with a bookbag and new pencils and new clothes. An input is an adult's action. It's the leader of the building. It's the teachers of the curriculum. What we have to do is replicate what those who are doing good work in those classrooms, that has to be in every classroom. And so, I'll say to you today, on the 6th of August, when that teacher calls and complains about the superintendent pushing him or her, remember how you felt about this data. But an input is what's required to get the output you desire. Thank you for letting me in.
Right, yeah. I mean, we also know about the input. And so, the input of your leadership or the input of others' leadership, everybody working together, that input helps us so that we can say that scholars have gains. That input helps us to say, you know, congratulations to Jackson Road Elementary for having 53.1%, 19% in their science scores. And so, last time that we were here, you kind of admitted that science was not really being taught. And so, we see now, with it being taught and principals making sure that that instructional time is there, we see the gains. And so, when you talk about the inputs, Dr. Simmons, we see and we know what that input is about. So, we appreciate you reminding us of that. But we also got to think about the input that is happening that get these results that we have. And so, we know that it can be replicated at other schools. And so, we're going to start looking at those inputs more in-depth so that we can get these gains at other schools. And so, not saying that future road is doing something, and it's not great or Ann Street, whatever the case may be, we're just looking at this to see that we can, we can use our own teachers inside, our own teachers as leaders, to go out and teach what they are doing. That's why we're in this whole thing of education, to be able to learn. So, all right, got that one taken care of. We see that we had some gains in fifth-grade science. What attributed to that, and how can we continue to increase in the coming years?
So, we've been talking about it. It's the very material that teachers are getting used to. You know, we didn't have any science curriculum before last year. And so, teachers teaching the standards, being comfortable with teaching, and we found in the schools where one correlation is experience.
Okay.
So, teachers, you know, some of the staff, the schools that I've recognized, they have veteran staff. They have staff who have been here and really know the curriculum. And, you know, when confronted with some challenges, the leader can make those adjustments, and the leadership team responds to it.
Do we think, you think in when new materials, new standards, and things are rolled out, do you think our employees are being completely honest as it relates to how they feel about? I know it's something they have to teach, but are they being completely honest so that we can actually give them that support? And we, you know, just had a conversation about inputs. And so, if they are providing that, if they're going to be completely honest, and I think a lot of this, with the experience that we have in central office and the experience that we have at the building level, we will be able to help our educators so that they are more comfortable with teaching the new materials that's coming down. I know that when I was in the classroom, shout out to Dr. Tanya Mahone-Williams, who always, always, always gave us the opportunity to be able to tell us how we really felt about teaching something. And if we had a hard time, if we didn't have that resource in our building, she was able to get it for us somewhere. And so, I know that with the expertise and the knowledge that we have in this district, that we are going to work on constantly improving and increasing our science scores. Now, we know that we have Kick Up, which is a system that pretty much houses all of our professional development. And, you know, but how do we effectively monitor the implication of various types of professional learnings that continue to maximize and help us to rise in our academic scores and to, for it to really be a ROI, return of investment, for us?
So, we use Kick Up, you know, in that way to plan future professional learning. Not sure if you're aware, but you have the learning module, which is just the courses that we offer, but we have a walks module. And so, you know.
So, a learning module and a loss module?
Walks, like learning walk.
Okay, walks, okay.
So, you know, you asked the question whether or not teachers are honest to talk about what their needs are. I think some of them are and some of them aren't. But we are trying to create a culture and an environment of support. And so, when central office does show up into a classroom to do a learning walk, that is not an evaluation.
It's non-punitive. It's to actually help the educator become better.
Right.
And, you know, as a consultant in various districts, I do as helping teachers that are on professional development plans, and when working with them, it's non-punitive. This is just to help you to become better, so when your next evaluator is in here, you're improving. So, and I think that they understand, and I think a lot of us understand that, but I think we have to just show it a little bit more, and I'm not sure how we can do that. But we have to just show it a little bit more, because I'm sure in that honesty, you would see the reflection of the scores, or you would see, you know, the scores increasing. Maybe because it was taught one year, and now you have the resource, you can go out and learn a little bit more. Maybe it's the rollout of it. I'm not sure, but just, we just need to continuously to focus on how we monitor and implement the various types of professional learning so that we can get that return of investment and maximize our academic achievement. And my last question, there are, how many schools, Dr. Simmons or Dr. Taylor, as it relates to UVA?
Five.
Five. All right. And those five schools, all right, let's, I think I have it written down. They are Atkinson, Griffin High School, John Henry Moore Elementary, Oars and Calum Road Middle School. Great, all right. So, in looking at, are we satisfied with the work that has been done through UVA when we look at the support that has been provided to our schools?
So, yes and no.
Okay.
The reason that I say yes is because the schools have been responsive. The reason that I say no is that the focus is not on the schools. The focus is on the district central office to increase its capacity to support school improvement.
Can we, can we back up? So, when you said, your first response was yes, and you said responsive, can you expound on that?
The initiatives that the district office and the schools work together to identify the goals that the schools and the district office work together to identify, the schools were responsive in working and maintaining focus on said initiatives and goals.
Can you give me an example of one of those said initiatives?
Give me an example.
So, the, and UVA speaks in terms of what they call big rocks.
Big rocks.
And so, the main one is supporting, building leaders to be instructional leaders to implement tier-one instruction.
Right.
And so, that's our primary goal in those five schools.
Okay.
Is to support those leaders, not so much with the operations and the management and all of those conditions, that we know those things are important. But when, you know, when we stand here before you and before, you know, the community, the bottom line is, you know, what are the outcomes? How do students perform? You know, are they having opportunities to show up on their state standardized assessments? What's the graduation rate? So, we're putting more of an emphasis on supporting those leaders to know all things that help to improve student outcomes.
All right. And so, back to Dr. Simmons, in your, in saying yes, if there was a, let's say, two initiatives, if you had a checklist, would you say that UVA checks all those boxes to where you're satisfied that we will continue to use them and renew them at this period of time?
So, my hope is that we don't have to continue to use them and renew, you know, that work. That work is really centered around the district understanding how to support schools for school improvement.
Mm-hmm.
The case that I have is Ann Street. The district has been here since the existence of the school being there. The district has struggled with finding ways to support the school to come off of the list. I think we're better at doing that, but we have to be more persistent and more pervasive at doing that. Said differently, I think anyone who works at district office will tell you, I constantly say to them, we have to behave differently. Behavior of the things that we do, not necessarily, you know, the petty stuff, but the reports that we require, the rules that we espouse. If it's not in support of school improvement, then should we be discussing it? That was my no in that regard. We have not been able to maintain the traction that I'd hoped we would as a district office. But in the midst of new curricula, in the midst of new leaders, in the midst of new legislation, in the midst of district experiencing tornadoes, in some ways, I'm surprised we've been able to keep our focus on anything, because we find ourselves constantly responding to stuff. And what we're trying to do is pull away from that type of mentality, that type of structure, and focus on schools and their ability to get better.
Right.
So that should we leave, should the school leader leave, the structures are in place for the schools to continue to get better.
And I think through that work, it speaks to what our mission and vision, you know, so the vision, district brand, strong leaders and great schools. And so, just a question right now. So, do you think with what UVA has provided, with the expertise that we have, are we good to go, or will we engage with them again?
We will engage with them again. We're engaging with them now. We have a better understanding of how we can nuance the work of functioning as a district central office and all of the things that come our way via the state, supporting schools, supporting the community, and all the things that come our way within that aspect, but also being who we are as an organization. What that means is be in a place where people want to work, being a place that establishes a culture that others want to talk about, things that are germane to the work, and then making sure that kids walk out of this organization better educated than they walked in. We're better at that today than we were a year ago. My belief is that at the pace and the traction that we have, if you ask me that in 365 days, we'll be better at it as well. I hope to not have to partner with people to teach us how to do that. But if I'm honest, if district office knew how to do that, you wouldn't have five schools on the state.
And then, not only in that, but when you talk about, you know, just having to do it, the work has to be done. And that's why you have different experts in different fields, because they're able to do the work. I just want us to make sure in, because like us, you know, COVID funds and all this stuff is running out, so now we need to start looking at the programs and things that we are using, and making sure that we're getting that return of investment and making sure that we give it to you. But we want to make sure that the emphasis on K through five in literacy work. And so, what factors are contributed? Emphasis on K through five in literacy work. And so, what factors are contributed to that, Dr. Taylor?
The main one, and you know, Dr.
To that, Dr. Taylor?
The main one, and you know, Dr. Simmons kind of coined read, write, speak, and solve with an emphasis on grade level every day. There's a lot that our teachers have to do and keep up with in a daily basis. But if we were to simply put it, it's that's our mission, is that we want our kids to have exposure to being able to read, then write about it, speak about it, and solve, but on grade level, because we know when we look at the scores, we could easily fall into empathy or sympathy for our students, but that will not help them to get to grade level. And if they sit at the end of a semester or the end of the year, and they are presented with grade-level material on the milestones, and they've never had an opportunity to read on grade level, they're at a disservice. And so, that's the main thing. I feel that our teachers have rallied around that point, you know, that phrase. That's not all that there is to teaching, but I think it is a simple goal to hold on to, is that we're going to read on grade level, and teachers are going to present their scholars with grade-level material. I would think that would be the main thing, knowing that we have strong material in every classroom, that our teachers don't have to go out. Now, they may have a preference to use something else, but looking at our scores, we cannot afford to go out and use watered-down or material that has not been vetted, or in fact, when it comes to literacy, state-approved. That is a house bill. Like, we must use state-approved such as Savis. And so, while some teachers may struggle with teaching something new, teaching something different, we're here to support that. But having consistent material in every scholar's hand, that is an accomplishment for us. We have not always been there. That, and then consistent interventions for our students by way of iReady.
Okay.
We have shifted to that. And so, all of our scholars, K through eighth grade, daily, have an opportunity to work on a personalized path that identifies where their points of instruction, their next point of instruction. And so, I would name those three things. Those would be the three things that I would name.
All right. I'm sorry, can we go? But I was distracted. So, when you talked, you said iReady, you can start from there.
So, iReady, board, you approved iReady. I think this perhaps is the third year, but second year that we have used it, K through eighth. And so, we recognize that, well, first, we have led with, we want students to receive grade-level standards instruction. However, we know there are some learning gaps that students have. And so, we have utilized iReady instructional grouping, where students, the program starts students where they are, and they work daily on those skills to fill that gap between grade level and perhaps where they are, to close those learning gaps. So, that was the third thing that I listed.
Okay, all right.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right.
And Dr. Simmons.
Any other board members, anything? Or we move on? All right. We will move on then to item five, Policy CC for first reading.
Good evening, board members. I stand before you to present Policy CC, which deals with organizational charts for our school district for first reading. At this time, there are no revisions or recommendations, revisions for the policy. Also attached in assembly is our current org chart for the 2425 school year.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Brown?
Yeah. My only thing is, wonderful policy, written very well. Is there any way that we can put in the language that tells them where they can find the organizational chart?
Where they can find on the website?
Yes.
Yes, it's generally posted in assembly on the website under the Board of Education. We can highlight even more.
So, yeah, just, I just, in the particular policy, if it could just add the language of where they can find the organizational chart. Because we know that a lot of time, access becomes a barrier. And so, in telling them where to find it, that alleviates that.
Understood.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
All right. What happens next is this policy will remain in assembly for feedback from the board or our stakeholders for a period of 30 days afterwards. It will be returned to the board for second reading, approval, and final adoption.
All right. Thank you very much. Policy EF, data management.
Good afternoon, board members. Chairman Dawson, Dr. Simmons. The district is presenting Policy EF, data management for first read. At this time, there are no recommended revisions. And I know you have this attachment, but as a recap, this puts into play all of our disaster recovery if there's ever a cyber attack or natural storm that takes out our data centers and our backup servers.
All right. So, I'm sorry.
No.
I was going to say, questions? Mr. Brown?
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. Line 20 and 21, is that broken up like that for a reason, or data privacy is the heading for 20?
20, data privacy, that is a heading. Same thing with like 11 and 12. I think it was just the way we copied it over.
Okay, all right. So, let us make sure that we bold data privacy.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And lastly, controls will be implemented as necessary to assure no data personal private. All right. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Any other board members? Questions? All right. Thank you very much. Board members, we have two action items. The first one is going to be our general. The first one is going to be our general obligation sales tax bond, series 2024, and Mr. Jones and, I don't know if they're, and Mr. Raymond James coming?
Mr. Raymond James.
Looks more like Bill Kemp. Raymond James is a nice speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, good evening. I'm going to start with just setting the tone with the summary up here, give a brief background, then call Mr. Kemp up. So the district recommends approval of general obligation sales tax bond, series 2024, for the deposit of $49.5 million into our construction fund. As a reminder, the taxpayers, the voters here in Spalding County on November 7, 2023, passed a resolution for East Sploes for the next five years, and it also gave you the opportunity to bond up to a maximum of 62.3 million. And after an analysis has been done with the board members, administration, and then our financial analyst, Mr. Bill Kemp from Raymond James and Associates, we settled on 49.5 million to bring to the board for a recommendation. So at this time, I'm going to call up Mr. Kemp. I believe he's got a presentation, Lonnie, if you'll kind of flip us over to the presentation. And board members, you should have that also in a paper form. And then when Mr. Kemp finishes and your questions, I'll come back and read your recommendation.
Sure do appreciate the opportunity to work for the Griffin Spalding School System again. It's been my great pleasure. This is a day that we've all been planning for, for a long time, not just November of 2023 when you voted, but a year plus before that. A lot of you all have seen me a few times. We've talked a lot about this, and I'm just glad, I'm going to explain why, but I'm very glad we're here pricing this bond issue today. Sales tax. Sales tax has been growing, is growing, you're averaging about a million two a month. Last five years, you've averaged seven and a half percent growth year after year after year. Everything you're going to look at and hopefully approve tonight is predicated on the sales tax not growing at all. Okay? So, all right. Current look at what interest rates were at the end of last week. I'm about to show you a picture, but this is even, this red line is even getting lower today from where it was last Friday. Look at this. All right, a lot of squabbling going on in America and throughout the world, and some concern about jobs and a softness in the economy that a lot of people see coming. Well, in the month of August, and really in the last three days of trading, rates have fallen off a lot. This is the five-year AAA tax exempt rate. You can see this basically was trading a little bit below 3% for the last couple months. Last week, it really has, really dove on us. That's good for you. Rates lower, prices go up, you get more value from selling your bonds. As Mr. Jones stated earlier, had a referendum. We had a referendum to continue the sales tax. We also voted the ability to borrow money against that sales tax. And we put it on the ballot as a tool to use it if it made sense. That referendum went very well, and here we are today, pricing bond issue. We're going to pay this bond issue back from '25 through '29. Those payment dates line up with our cash flows that the voters approved. Gone through a process to get ratings. By virtue of being a public school system in the state of Georgia, you're subject to the state intercept program, which is AA1. We asked for a rating from Moody's Investor Service. I just want to say, you all have done a great job of planning, but I wanted to say that Dr. Simmons and Mr. Jones represented this school system very well. We had an excellent, long meeting with Moody's Investor Service, and they really did a great job of telling the story of what we're doing here in Griffin Spalding Schools. Our bonds have an average life of about 3.6 years. Bonds are going to mature in '26 through '29. Our bond yield, that is the average rate on each one of these four maturities, is just under 2.63%. Just to put it in ballpark terms, for the last couple months, we've been looking at a rate above 3%. And so, this is a big swing in a short period of time. When we factor in the rating and all the other costs of issuance associated with us, our rate is, our all-in cost is about 303%. It's a lot lower than we have been budgeting for and planning for. And when we talk about ratings, I just wanted to give you all a picture of how you all line up with this scale of credit quality. We're in the upper, the high-grade credit, all right? So when the markets are having problems, and your 401K is, your retirement account is losing value, a lot of times, people scurry over to the bond market because you're a sure bet, you're going to pay back your debt. So that's one thing. Not only have rates generally fallen, but the appetite for your paper is really peaked right now. Moody's cited your sound reserves and stable local economy. And that's, again, just more of the same. You know you're doing what you can do, you're doing a good job of what you can control, and here's an outside entity telling you so. All right, page seven here. This is a pricing summary. Lot of numbers on here. I know Dr. Warren was a math major, we were talking about this earlier. All this stuff is just, prices go up when yields go down, but the highlighted information about yield by maturity and your dollar price, what, this school board has the authorization to sell up to $62.3 million. And then just looking at your needs and timing of those needs, we settled on, let's sell a bond issue that gets us 49 and a half million dollars upfront. So we're getting, getting that need for a lot fewer dollars than 49 and a half. We're selling 46.44 million of what the voters approved, all right? When I look, when I compare your yields to the AAA tax exempt scale posted this morning, on average, we're about an eighth of a percent higher than the AAA scale. So two things have happened. Our estimates were based on a wider spread to the AAA scale. So the scale went down and our rates are tighter. I usually run it at plus 30 or plus 25, just that's a normal market. So we've had a lot more aggressive pricing and aggressive investors. Page eight, this is where your bond proceeds are going to be used, the deposit to the construction fund, and the budgeted cost of issuance. Any excess cost of issuance that we have left over stays in the construction fund. All right. We voted five maturities. We decided to just sell bonds in the last four years. If you notice, that debt service is lower than some estimates y'all have seen in the past, about $13.1 million a year, and you're collecting $14.22 million a year. So with no growth in sales tax, we are projected to have about $16.3 million in addition to your 49 and a half, that you're going to be able to use for additional capital needs. Things you didn't want to finance, we're going to collect that money in year one and be able to, it'll just go in addition to the 49 and a half. Again, 13.1 million is our average annual debt service in years two through five of the Sploes. And right now, you've averaged $14.2 million a year in collections. So under very conservative estimates, we are able to pay for this and still have plenty of cushion. So the tool that you voted turned out to be a good tool to use. We're able to access this money at 63% cost of the issuer, you. It allows you to move forward quickly on a lot of projects, and that quicker movement allows you to finance those projects cheaper. So why don't we give you a check right now? There's a few more steps. Your actions tonight solidify all these numbers. Nothing's going to change. We will prepare several things. One is the final official statement. Another one is what's called a tax levy resolution. Sales tax is planned to be used to pay these bonds, but it's a voted general obligation bond, so we must go to the taxing entity, the county who collects your property taxes if you ever ask them to do so. That'll occur on the 19th, their regular meeting on Monday, the 19th, and we'll wire funds on Thursday, August 22nd. You'll have money sitting in account, and that money is going to grow, and interest rates for your investments are at a higher rate right now than your fixed rate on your bonds. So it's a, it's a good story. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have. I know I went through a lot of information very quickly, but thank you again for allowing us to be here with you tonight.
Board members, any questions? All right, thank you so very much.
Lonnie, flip us back, there you go, flip us back to the, there you go. So board members, after hearing that presentation, it's recommended that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approve general obligation sales tax bond, series 2024, which will deposit $49,500,000 into the construction fund.
All right, board members, no other questions about this, I would entertain a motion.
So move, Ms. Che, go ahead.
I have a motion by Ms. Cook and a second by Mr. Holmes.
Yeah.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Be 4-0, let the record reflect that Mr. Brown had to step away.
Did y'all see Bruce jumping in the seat?
All right, and then we'll move right on to our LGIP bank account resolution.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Board members, the district recommends the approval of opening a bank or investment account through Georgia Fund One to receive East Sploes seven proceeds. This is kind of a formality item, but the state requires board approval to open up an investment account. And this just simply means as those $1.2 million or higher deposits start coming in every month, they will initially come to a state investment account, which in your financial report you're seeing has been drawing over 5%. After that, we'll set up a local bank account to receive those proceeds and write checks as necessary. So with that being said, it's recommended that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approve the opening of a bank or investment account through Georgia Fund One to receive East Sploes seven proceeds.
All right, any questions? I would entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Ms. McDonald. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Be 5-0.
I just have a quick question for Mr. Jones.
All right, Mr. Jones.
Doesn't have anything to do with the vote. I was just curious, Mr. Jones, where East Sploes monies, so because of the bonds, we have to do the Georgia Fund One, is that, is that, no?
Two separate things, that whether we do a bond or not, when the East Sploes proceeds start getting collected by the state, then they have to deposit it into a bank account. So right now, we have, I think, four other bank accounts, just like we're doing. And while we're talking about it, we'll be closing East Sploes four account this week. So one of those has actually gone away for the construction that we've been using. So this is a formality. Once you sign these documents tonight, we'll have other accounts that the bond proceeds will have to deposit in, so two different things.
Okay, so where does Sploes six funds go currently? Because it's over, there's no more funds to be deposited, is that correct?
We have Sploes three, four, five, and six. Four is the one that's going to be closed because of the items that were voted in, that one are now complete, or the finishing of it is with other funds. But all of those exist initially at the state pool, LGIP, and then they have a local bank account over here at First National, who actually write checks on and solicit funds when we're ready to do that with.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Byron.
Ma'am, Mr. Chair.
I think what Ms. McDonald was asking Byron is, is there a Sploes six account? And even though the collections have ceased, the funds are in.
Yeah.
So where, where are six funds? Are they in a special, are they in a special bank account, just like the, this bond money will be? That was my question, he's right. Okay, I was just curious, because I don't think we, I don't ever recall asking this question.
Yeah, well, that bond, the, well, there was a bond that was already in place, probably before you were elected and before I came, and all I did was inherit that, and we've been paying it off in like 2020, so this is the first time we've had to do that with Mr. Kemp.
All right, thank you, and thank you to Mr. Kemp, too. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you so very much. All right, board members, you have a few informational items that are in your packet. Just know that those will be conversations that will be upcoming. If you have any questions about those, make sure that you ask those. We do have something for executive session, but we'll take time for our governance team comments. I'll start with Mr. Brown to my right.
Hello, hello, just want to say, happy second day of school. First day of school was yesterday, and a shout out to all of our community participants who participated in day one in the district. Adam, what was that final total of folks who came out and supported our schools? 268 community partners to come out and join us. Thank you, thank you so much. I heard that y'all were real deep over there in District Five at Jordan Hill. Heard you had like 30 people.
I think that's like, I'm tired.
It was lit, that's what I'm talking about, no cap. And then also, as I was walking down the hallway, you know, the bulletin board initiative that I started in 2020, well, 2019, right before COVID, it is good to see that the boards have been updated. So a shout out to Adam Pugh and Laura Bieber for your hard work in getting those boards updated. It makes our campus look very, very nice when they come visiting central office. And so, I just want to say thank you to the communications department for taking on these many initiatives and ideas and tasks. Thank you so much, Adam and Laura, you guys are seriously appreciated, and thank you to the superintendent and governance team for your support. Just want to remind everybody that, you know, we're in the first week of school, be patient with us. Shout out to our transportation department, shout out to our maintenance department, shout out to everybody that's helping to make things right. And so, it's the first week, be patient with us, and know that we are making it work for our scholars, families, and for our employees. Thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Cook?
Yes. Kudos again to the beginning of a great school year. Congratulations to all of you who helped us on the first day. Welcome back, teachers, staff, students, it's going to be a great year. And as Mr. Brown said, it takes all hands on deck to make this go. So congratulations to all of you for doing your part in helping us have a great school year. Congratulations to those teachers, administrators, and students who made great gains on the Georgia milestones. We're going to continue to go upward and make continued great progress on this. Excited about the Dundee Promise Technical Education Program for our Griffin High graduates. Hope if any of you are listening out there and you haven't made application to Southern Crescent, that you will do so, so you can get additional financial aid to make your dreams come true. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Holmes?
Just want to echo what you all have said, but I want to take it back to the education celebration.
There you go.
And I already told Adam, that band, I don't know who responsible for forgetting them.
He is.
Adam is. But I almost forgot where I was.
Come on now.
But that was high energy, and I think that was the start of the school year for a lot of our employees. So I want to thank you all for that because. So I want to thank you all for that because that, that, that was how we needed to start. And I think that carried over. And I can't say how much I enjoyed hearing, going to the different schools. Hey, how's it going? How was the first day? Wonderful. Great, great. Total different attitude. And I appreciate that because, you know, that's what makes us great, our employees, having that attitude. And that can carry over into the classroom. So I, I just want to thank everybody, those that I didn't even get around to. It was just a joy to go to the schools and, I'm just gonna say it like it is, not to hear a whole bunch of complaining. It was a joy to just go and see people saying, great, man, best year ever, blah, blah, blah. That, that really, that really was the sentiment for me. Every school that I went to, everybody was just in such a great mood. And I, I just told them, you know, the kids, especially the one new into, to the middle school, they were, they were pretty much scared and didn't know. I said, give them a week. They'll, they'll get back into their groove. But for the, for the first couple of days that I visited schools and I got a chance to visit Mr. Martin them at Transportation and it, it, it just, it just was great to see the attitudes and the enthusiasm. So I pray that we continue that and keep it at that level.
Okay, Ms. McDonald?
I, I just had a great time yesterday going to Jordan Hill and Beaverbrook. Those are the two schools in my district. And I was a little bit better prepared this year when I drove up to Jordan Hill first. They had all the Spalding County lights going and fire trucks and diggers and bulldozers and all that kind of stuff. Last year, when I went to Jordan Hill, I thought, oh, my lord, there's a water leak on the first day or something. So I was a little bit better prepared for that yesterday. But we had a great time at Jordan Hill. And then I went on over to Beaverbrook. And, and what Mr. Holmes did not tell each of you is that he wanted to ask me to dance at the celebration, but he did not. Now just be honest, Mr. Holmes. I also would need, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my Sun City neighbors for what they do for this district. We have the Parent Academy ladies that go to Atkinson, I think, once a week or once a month to help those students that are a little bit behind, is, is what Dr. Taylor indicated. Just resources of, I think a lot of those women are, are retired teachers. And we have recognized them here before. And I hope that we'll do that again. But I also wanted to thank the Pod Nine, Little Jim Court is a street out in Sun City. The entire pod had nine or ten, probably fifteen people there at Beaverbrook. They have adopted Beaverbrook. Every child last Christmas got a Christmas gift from this pod. From the, from that pod. And it almost brings tears to my eyes. But they do such great work for our schools. And we could not do the great work that we do without our volunteers from Sun City and all over this community. And to know that two hundred and sixty-eight community people were involved in opening our schools is incredible. I really enjoyed watching the videos and I certainly enjoyed looking at all the pictures. I too wanted to thank Adam and Laura for the, that's the first thing I noticed when I walked down the hallway today. Just the, just what it adds to the hallways as far as the updated, I don't even know what you call those things, but?
Bulletin boards?
Bulletin boards, yeah. I haven't put one together in a while, so I forgot what they were called. But anyway, thank you, Adam. I also wanted to thank you and Laura for the celebration. I got home that afternoon and I just immediately emailed both of them to thank them for their time and effort and talent for putting that together. I was inspired. I, I agree with Mr. Holmes. I can't imagine leaving that church without have, being inspired to go forth and do the work that needs to be done for our parents, teachers, kids, and employees that I always talk about. So I wanted to thank them. Thank you to our support staff, bus drivers, nutrition workers. And I also wanted to ask Dr. Simmons if he could look into the, with Bruce here, too. You know, I, I let Dr. Simmons know last night I had been contacted about some of the nutrition workers working in pretty hot kitchens. Could we perhaps get some of those portable air conditioners in these, in these buildings? And Mr. Wheeler's here, too. No, he's not. Until this heat passes. Is there any way that we could do that? So if you would look into that for me, I, I would appreciate it. I just wanted to say thank you to the people that are here tonight. Dr. Taylor, appreciate your presentation. I forgot to tell you that when you were up here. But I think we're off to a great start. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just, just really quickly, as Mr. Brown indicated, the first year, the first days of schools bring about a lot of excitement. But, but it also requires some troubleshooting. We, we are not operating as best as we'd like, but our intentions are there. So the patience would definitely be appreciated. And, and I assure you, everyone in the staff is, is working feverishly to rectify issues with information workflows, you know, timings, coordinations, what have you. We understand. And, and these are not the experiences that we prefer. But it will, it will subside and we will get better. I also want to acknowledge, you know, what's happening in our schools. I agree with Mr. Holmes. I've heard lots of feedback about the excitement and the momentum. And so, board members, I want to thank you for your participation in the day one of the district. Adam, you and Laura, thank you for ensuring that their signup sheets were out there. And it's a collective effort. I've always said that, you know, we will go as far as this community enables us to go. And days like yesterday is, the community wants us to go as far as we can. So kudos to those who are leading. Those, to those who are teaching in this, my heart and joy go. Just, just excited about this week. Excited about you all as, as a governance team and, and what the future holds and just looking forward to it. So let's, uh, let's get this done.
Awesome. Awesome. Board members, thank you for those that are able to attend the Archway Retreat that'll be on the fifteenth and sixteenth. And have already handled those type of things. So we'll have a full report.
Mr. Chair, speaking of Archway, there was a meeting on the calendar for Archway that I?
In the morning at eight o'clock?
Tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning at eight o'clock.
My calendar wasn't, Ms. Rayford, today.
Oh, yeah. And there was two retractions, several retractions of that particular meeting.
Oh, wow. They didn't take it off the calendar? It won't be there.
Well, that, the tomorrow is the, is not the education one. But yes, there was several retractions of that. So I'm not exactly sure. I'll find, I'll, I'll inquire.
Just make sure when, if they put it on the calendar, they can still go and take it off the calendar as well. Thank you.
Understand. So board members, I would then entertain a motion to go into executive, uh, executive session to discuss and deliberate upon appointment, employment, compensation, and, but evaluation of personnel.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Holmes and a second by Ms. McDonald. All in favor? She said it before she did. But, sorry about that. I had to pick one of them. Sorry. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. It'll be five oh. And we will take just a five-minute bathroom break to, before we go in there.
Can we add norms and protocols to executive session?
I don't think that's a, that's not a, something that can be added to executive session.
What, what would be the item for it?